This is two years down the road. I think it's good that we're proactive here and trying to look at measures so that not only we can plan for excessive use on our county roads in that part of Lincoln County, but if there's any other way that we can work with the state in helping us not only to find alternative routes, but hopefully maybe even some compensation.
Very good.
Madam Chair, I have two things. One is a rather sad note. We have our State Association President Executive Director Bob Wilcox is undergoing cancer surgery as we speak. And his able assistant, Chris Jacobson, had her father pass away quite suddenly. So I was, you get to know these people and it's rather sad and difficult. If you're a praying person, chalk one up for Bob. The other thing I had Sean give you is the latest overview of the how we can spend our money that we are getting from the COVID situation. And it goes into detail as to where we can apply those funds and what recording that we have to give back to the Treasury on how we have spent those. And there appears to be somewhat of a, I think, misunderstanding or maybe too broad of interpretation because of the $11 million that Lincoln County gets, what we can spend it on. And I know Yankton County is anticipating spending it on roads and bridges, but it explicitly says that you really can't do that. But we can spend it on water and sewer projects and other things. In case anybody in the audience wants to go, all you have to do is go to NACO, National Association of Counties, and you look under local government and you will find the same rules that are right here. And you can see that it limits this because we could certainly use the money on buildings and expanding and other things, but we are somewhat hampered on what those monies can be applied to. So anyway, I just thought for their own edification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to item one on our regular business, second reading and public hearing.
This is the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as portion approximately 10 acres, north half, northwest quarter, except H1 and N and north 211 and a half feet of east 412 feet, section 33, township 100 north, R49 west from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommendation for approval failed zero to five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Brown, representing county planning. The applicant for this item is Matt Roach of Pride Built Homes. Subject, again, the subject parcel would be 10 acres out of a 75 acre parcel. Property is at the intersection of 272nd and South Dakota Highway 11. This is approximately a mile to the east of the city of Harrisburg. The applicant did submit a concept plan with the application. The intention is to subdivide the property into eight lots that would be utilized for contractor shops, the first one being Pride Built Homes, which is the applicant. This property is within the subdivision authority of the city of Harrisburg, so there is no accompanying preliminary plan with this. That will be approved by the city of Harrisburg. So the county does not have jurisdiction over the drainage grading plan or any site development improvements here. As noted in the staff report, this application is not compliant with the Lincoln County Conference of Plan because the Lincoln County Conference Plan identifies this as future agricultural property. However, the city of Harrisburg has adopted an updated Conference of Plan and they have identified this as future light industrial area. So the proposal to commercial would be less intensive than what's identified by the city. Of note is that this property is surrounded by agricultural property. The nearest dwelling is approximately 500 feet. This is Wayne and Alice Bramstead. This residence right here. Wayne is the brother of the property owner of this property here. The nearest commercial property to this would be further up on South Dakota Highway 11 within the joint jurisdictional area. Again, planning commission recommendation for approval failed zero to five. With that, we'd have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
What were the areas of concern at the planning commission meeting?
Drainage, which again, the county doesn't have any jurisdiction over because this is within the city of Harrisburg subdivision authority. Second would be Wayne and Alice. I've had discussions with them in the past. This application was brought before you a year ago for the same item. They did however, move the driveway a little bit to the east and they did incorporate more detention on the site. But their concern was this would be more of a spot zone, that there is no commercial property within the vicinity.
Staff recommendation was to approve, correct?
Correct.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff? If not, is the applicant here? Come on up. State your name and address and tell us what you want to do.
Could I request to speak last with all those that are in favor?
You want to speak after the people in favor?
I want to speak after everybody in favor, if that would be okay.
I guess you're in one of the people in favor of it, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Anybody here to speak in favor of the application?
Hello, my name's Dan Devine. I live at 27094 Deer Hollow Court, Harrisburg.
Morning, Dan.
Morning.
Go ahead.
I am in favor of this development. I believe this will be a premier business location for Harrisburg in southeast Sioux Falls. Our personal business will be located at the northwest corner of this property. We're a luxury home builder that holds high standard to our product and works and who works for us. We'll have an HOA for this development that will hold owners of this development to the same high standard we will be requiring at all preliminary, sorry, we will be requiring all buildings to have a preliminary site plan and elevations of the buildings to be submitted prior to construction. We will be requiring landscaping and nice buildings. We have done our homework on engineering the water on this property to not interfere downstream properties. We spoke with neighboring landowners that want our, about what our plans are happening with this water. I feel very confident we can move forward with this development and address any concerns along the way. We'll be neighbors with these people and want a good relationship moving forward.
Thank you.
Also, I have a letter from a person that will be buying one of the properties. Would it be okay to read that?
Did you want to read that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
It'll be very slow because I suck at speaking in front of people.
That's all right. Go for it.
His name is Yuri Shashik, Shashinik. He's Ukrainian and I can't understand what his last name actually is, but I can, it is Y U R I S U S H C H I K. In his letter, he says, hello, and thank you for taking the time to hear from me. My name is Yuri and I am the owner of Elite Builders in Sioux Falls. I have a business, I have been in business building homes for the past 14 years and I'm always looking for great opportunities to expand my business and a better community of and better the community of Sioux Falls and surrounding area. With this rezoning of the property, businesses like myself have a chance to expand. It'll bring more jobs and opportunities for small businesses to grow. I have worked with Pride Built Homes in the past and personally know how detailed and beautiful their work is. Often times, commercial buildings are thought to take away from the landscape of the area, but I know that the work that Pride Built does will only add so much, both visually and economically. I look forward to expanding my business and seeing other businesses have this opportunity with the rezoning of this property. Thank you again for the time to listen to a fellow community member.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, come on up.
My name is Larry Brans. I am the owner of this said property. And we did have a meeting last night with the opposing group of citizens. And what was brought to my attention, which we are absolutely trying to work with, would be the drainage. We definitely do not want any unseen problems with this Mink property. And we are working with them, hopefully that they will understand that. As far as the other concerns, citizens, what I've noticed was more the concern about changing the environment around that community. I don't feel that a small industrial area like this would really have a bearing on the traffic because the people who are working there will be leaving at five and coming at seven to eight in the morning, roughly two dozen vehicles. Now, in my vision of things, and you guys can question my vision, but if it had to be built at Canton, would it be wiser that they have to travel that much farther since they're in a local community right there? Would also increase traffic over a longer period of time and a longer distance. My brother also sent a letter through texting and I would like to read that if that's at all possible. If there's any questions that you guys would like to ask me, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and read your letter that you have?
These phones sometimes are not conducive to being very easy. Here's my letter to the commissioners meeting. Good evening. Well, this was planned to be this tonight instead of today, so I have to change that to good morning. I'm Myron Brans. Sorry I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. I'm in Missouri. I own a South Dakota, half of the quarter being considered for commercial development, which is only 10 acres. I hope you will consider approving this land for a few reasons. Approving this land for commercial use will benefit more than the buyer and the sellers. It will benefit the landowners around it by increasing property values. It will increase tax revenue by having more people paying taxes to the community, which more money for new schools, which we all know will be happening in a fast as areas grow. It will improve the water problem on the land. I am totally convinced that the buyers Pride Built Homes, excuse me, are totally committed to managing and water problems that the neighbors are experiencing when there are heavy rains and the satisfaction of the neighbors. These are the reasons that I ask that you approve, to give them buyers a chance to prove themselves. Thank you, Myron Bramsted.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Any of you commissioners have any questions?
When you said you've been working with people on drainage issues, what have you done or what are you proposing?
We basically just did planning so far and we're willing to continue to do the planning in such that it doesn't flood the neighbors. The true drainage of this land would go through Sminks and we definitely want to work with Sminks to make sure that it doesn't cause any problems with them. The meeting last night, there was other people talking about drainage, but that land is a high point and it goes a tile system now to Lake Alvin. And the only place it drains through is through Merlin Sminks property, which is, he is DC, so it'd be his wife and his son would be the more appropriate people that'd be of concern. His brother Norm has been talking to us and we haven't really come to a real decision yet. We are working with planning to try to make it feasible so everybody will be acceptable to it.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair. Toby, would you put that first picture up there and leave that up there, please?
Is there anybody else here to speak in favor?
Thank you.
Of the application? Hi, just state your name and address, please.
Cameron Rasmussen, 914 Woodmont Avenue, Harrisburg, South Dakota. I have known Matt and Dan for six years and actually have used their company to build my current home or future home, I guess. We'll be moving in August. I'd just like to speak on behalf of the company, that it's always such a pleasure working with them. They always go the extra mile to make sure that not only the client is happy, but also the community. They're heavily integrated in Harrisburg and the surrounding community and making sure that it's a better life for all surrounding them. They take pride in their buildings and how they appear and also the upkeep of the land when they are building and the facility when they use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Mike Bramsted, Larry's son. I also own an adjoining 12 acres right there that I recently purchased from my uncle. I'm not one that rehashes things over and over, everything that's important that has already been said. So the only thing I'm going to say is, one of the things that I've learned in my 20 years of military service is that people who are more adaptable to change are the ones that can be the most successful. Some people want change, some people don't want change. The ones that are wanting change are wanting to bring better lives for themselves, their businesses, their families, the community. Okay? People who don't want change are the ones that wanted to stay exactly the same. We live in a world where there has to be change. That's just the way it is. Thank you, ma'am, for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the application? Good morning.
Good morning. This is a little nerve wracking saying up here, you guys are.
Don't be nervous at all. Just state your name and address and let us know what you have to say.
Okay, Danielle Konetschny, 1714 South First Avenue, Sioux Falls. I am the Realtor for Pride Built Homes and I have been working with them over the last five years since they began their company. As their Realtor, I could not be more proud of representing the product and the quality that they build. Whenever they go into a development, they add an extreme amount of value to that neighborhood and to that community. And it's because of the product that they build. So they went from not having a name as a builder in this community to being one of the top luxury builders in Sioux Falls. So that just attests to the product that they put forward every day. If I were going to be somebody that lived in that neighborhood, I'd want somebody with that type of reputation putting in a product in my neighborhood so you could control the quality of what's going in over there. The other thing is, they've always been very innovative. They're a very innovative company and we're very active in the Home Builders Association. This would provide a solution for many home builders that are looking for this type of product. We get requests all the time from home builders finding something like this for them and there's nothing available. So I think that provides a really good solution for a lot of builders who in this market are having a tough time anyway, you know? And that would just provide some relief for them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Matt Metzger, 600 Douglas for Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57110. I've been Pride Built banker for eight years, but I've known Matt for 20 years. I guess, not to rehash what everybody's been saying today, but I'm just going to say ditto because they put a lot of pride and effort into their product. This has been a vision of Matt's for, well, as long as I've been his bank, eight or 10 years. And so I just know that they don't do anything half ass, I guess is what I want to say. They, they, if anybody went to the Pray to Homes last weekend and walked through their house, you'll see the detail and the vision and just seeing what they do on their homes, I know they're going to put the same amount of pride and effort into this product or project. And so I hope to see it come to fruition and I know that they will do their best to keep everybody happy and work on all the issues that need to be addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shane Simmons. I live at 500 Cottonwood Drive in Harrisburg, South Dakota. I've known Matt and Dan for many years and I believe that this would be a great project for the community. They do have high standards and I think they would do the best work for the drainage issues if there is any and have a very quality building there. So, hope it gets approved.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the application?
I'm Scott Sterns, 4612 South Klein Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm here, I work for Fisher Sisters Real Estate. I'm one of the brokers and office managers and I've got to know Matt and Dan over the last few years, working with them. I will absolutely attest to the testaments that everybody else, of the quality that they do build, the attention to detail that they do in their work. They take, you know, it's in their name. I mean, it's kind of, I don't want to be sounding cliche, but Pride Built, they do take absolute 100% pride in the work that they do and that's not just finishing work, that's site work. That's making sure that the site is impeccable, aesthetically pleasing. And I just know with this development that they're going to, that they're going to do is they're going to put the same effort and quality into that. So I really do hope that this does get approved for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Roach, 284 Tiger Way. Like everybody has said here, we never go into anything knowing that it's just going to be a breeze. We are always open to conversations and the hard conversations. I know the neighboring landowners around this property, we had a meeting last night. It started off with drainage issues. With the time that we've sat down with Harrisburg, we pulled up all the drainage, where water goes, what water goes to what person's land, where it goes back and where its final destination is. Dan and myself have obsessed over this piece of property because we don't ever want there to be a problem for anybody downstream. Like Larry said, all of the water runs through Myron's land and then it runs through Smink's land. Norm Smink and his, I believe it's son-in-law Ryan Smink, are not opposed to this. They just want to make sure that they're not getting somebody else's problem. They have been amazing men to work with, very open conversations, a bunch of hypothetical conversations have been had. Everybody has an opinion on this piece of property and clearly we're for it. But if you completely pull every person's opinion out of it and you simply talk about the landowners that are directly in contact with that piece of property, there are 11 landowners. There are two in opposition. There are four that are fully vocally for it and there are seven that are completely indifferent. We have not heard a word for them for or against. And I believe that their silence speaks louder than saying nothing at all. I don't know what we can do to get an approval today from you. We're not the type of people that are going to walk into this, purchase this land, develop this land, sell it, take the money and run. Our business is going to be here. We're going to be on this site. We're not a five-day-a-week business, we're a seven-day-a-week business. We're going to be on this site seven days a week. Dan and myself are both members of Harrisburg. We live here, we spend our money here, we eat here, our children goes to school here. It looks as if we're just these Sioux Falls contractors that are coming into a community and completely ruining it, but this is our community also and we want to make it better. We want to make it aesthetically pleasing to look at, people to be proud to live across the street from it. And like Toby had said, this is light industrial. We're not looking to have this light industrial, looking to have this commercial. These are eight to five businesses. All eight of those lots are pre-sold should you guys approve this. They're all businesses that work with us and people that we want to surround our business because we're going to be right on the corner of that property. We have full approval from the city of Harrisburg. They love the fact that this property has been engineered, not one time, it's been engineered twice because we went back and we heard the concerns of the opposing members and we redesigned it. We put more water retention. We worked with Aaron Norman to figure out how to slow the water and to improve the water downstream of these landowners. Is there any questions from you guys?
Can you just tell us a little bit about how you're going to police the appearance?
We have 3D renderings of our shop. We want to set it, police it as in how it's going to look.
Well, I'm sure your facility is going to look very nice, but the contractors that are going to be
Yep.
using these and, you know, whether they're purchasing or renting them, how that's going to be placed so there's not
Sure.
It doesn't get, like, it looks like, you know, a salvage yard or something.
Absolutely. So because our establishment is going to be there, we'll set up this community like an HOA. There'll be an architectural committee, which will start off as just Dan and myself and the architectural approvals. So somebody can't come in and just put a building in. Just like a neighborhood in Sioux Falls, just like a neighborhood in Harrisburg, the developer has approval or denial based off of simply aesthetics of the property and we hold a very high standard, probably higher than any other developer because we are a luxury home builder.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, then we'll go ahead and hear from people who would like to speak in opposition.
Madam Chair, I have a couple questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So Matt, if I understand correctly, it's going to be all contractor shops on the site, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have the HOA rules been designed yet?
They have not because based off of your guys' approval or denial, should you approve, we go back to Harrisburg and they set complete standards of, is it paved, how is it paved? Is there curb and gutter? You know, is there a single holding tank or is there multiple? They essentially give us the roadmap of what they're approving and then they'll approve the HOA that's set forth.
Do you have copies of the renderings or drawings?
I do.
Can we take a look at them?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Hey Matt, you can just put them up on the table.
Oh, really? Where? Hello? Maybe I can turn it. This is a side view, front view, the other side. We like to look, to see what they look like at night also, so we do a night rendering.
Matt, a question, looking at that, is there outdoor storage or anything around there that you have? Or are you buffering anything with fences or what kinda other aesthetic landscaping are you doing?
So we're going to require landscaping. We are gonna require a certain amount of grass out front. So it's, there's a nice soft feel there. Dan and I have talked about this in depth. It's almost as if you're danged if you do, you're danged if you don't put fences up. It's almost better to not allow fences because when fences are there, people think it hides stuff. So our request would be that there is no fence. Unless, of course, it's storing stuff like their work trucks and such and they just want to keep them safe. So we're gonna have to put the verbiage and the wordage correct in the HOA so people aren't stacking garbage there. The nice thing is we can set up a board too. And once all eight of those lots are full, each person will have a seat at the, a chair at the board. And if one of these people are collecting garbage, the other seven could vote to have that site cleaned up. And if they don't, they'll be in penalty of the HOA.
So these lots are approximately one acre?
1.1 acres.
1.1?
Yes, sir.
Matt, with regard to the drainage issues, what kinda water retention or detention are you doing onsite?
I'd like Aaron Norman to speak to that. He's our engineer. I don't wanna speak to it and give you false information. I'm, that's way out of my league.
That's something you'll work with the city with, I'm also assuming.
Absolutely.
Since they have jurisdiction over that.
Absolutely. We've actually sat down with Aaron. We requested that it be engineered in the manner that it's over-engineered, that there will be no problems. I have personally had water in my basement due to a neighborhood that had improper drainage. And once you have that, you do have PTSD to water and you're hypersensitive to it. This is something that we're not going to push and make another person's problem. I've lived it, Dan's lived it, so many people have. That's not what we're looking to do here. We wanna improve on every aspect of this.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to people that would like to speak against the application. Do you wanna step up and state your name and address? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Norm Smink is my name. I live at 47774, I think there was three sevens in there, but, on 273rd Street. My sister-in-law and her son are basically the landowners now of the property to the south of this proposed development. I appreciate the discussions that we've had with Matt and Dan. I guess my nephew couldn't be here this morning. He had some emergency came up. He expressed to me the concern is that, yes, they are concerned about water, but what is, what is gonna be done? And if it gets approved as a commercial rezoning, then maybe the issues of water, maybe it goes to Harrisburg, I don't know. Maybe it gets pushed to the next development in that area and the next development. And pretty soon you got a big problem of water runoff and it all goes through his land. And I have dealt with the city of Harrisburg when the Nielsen development on the northeast corner of Harrisburg was taking place. And the engineer says there's no more water coming off a housing development than there is land. And all of us farmers just kind of rolled our eyes and said, well, we don't have a chance. And I can show you, I, I didn't know you had the capability. Otherwise I'd have taken some pictures along where it shows half of my farm underwater after a big rain. And losing crops, losing topsoil. And we don't want that to continue to happen in any future developments. I guess that's our major concern, the water runoff.
Mr. Smink, I have a question for you. How is the sighting of the development going to exacerbate the drainage issue?
Well, all of that land drains south. And that's where my nephew and my sister-in-law's land is. Whether it's through tile lines, there are some tile lines there, a lot of them are very old, operating at probably maximum 25% capacity. And so you have a lot of retained water over a period of time where crops drown out either that or it stays in a, a pond, slough.
Mr. Bramstedt was saying earlier that they were doing planning for this, to take care of these water issues. Has that resulted in any concrete plans or is it just talk?
Just some, excuse me. Talked about a pipe, a culvert, I don't know how huge that would have to be, buried under my nephew's ground. He talked about a swale or grass waterway. Is that going to, how deep does that have to be in order to drain that corner? I don't think any of that has been determined yet. And will that grass waterway be able to be driven across with farm equipment? Or is it gonna be something that is going to be a obstruction in the middle of the field that we've gotta turn around and somehow get around to the backside of the field?
Is that, at whose expense would that be done at?
Good question. I assume there would have to be an easement. And the only thing I've been involved with is an easement is a Dakota Access Pipeline. And they bought an easement to put their pipeline through some of my property, not in this general area. But they paid the easement at the going rate of land at that time.
Are you, is your property outside of Harrisburg city limits?
Yes.
Okay. So the Harrisburg City Council doesn't represent you?
No.
But they're the ones who will decide the drainage issue?
I assume so because they have the jurisdiction within the three-mile radius of the city limits.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the application?
My name's Wayne Bramstedt. I live right across from this, this proposal. And I've lived there for 48 years. And during that time, I've had water issues with the city of Harrisburg. When they started building all the houses there, the, the water comes down through my pasture and it would flood, flood 20, 22 to 28 acres of my crop ground and pasture. I went around to different ones at the city level and to, and county level. And because Highway 11 is operated, run by the DOT, there was nothing they could do about the building a bigger culvert to, to let the water escape. So it just backed up onto my property. This, it, when it did back up, it, it went across the road, washed the road out, went out, went south into my neighbor's property and then down into Norm's. And then back down through that, this waterway that they're talking about, to the lake. And the water was pretty putrid. It was like sewer water. But anyway, that and the fact that I live right across the, from this property and I feel that this, this, building this industrial park is gonna kinda ruin the sale of my property as a, as a farm. I, that farm, I built that farm up myself, all, what I've been building on it except for one. And, and I have, I got neighbors to the east of me that travel that road every day. And they don't want this building site to cause more stress than that towards the, the traffic on Highway 11. Getting on and off and it is what their main concern is. And I've got their names on a piece of paper. They signed a paper that said they were against this proposal. There's 29 of them. And I guess that's all. I would, I would hope that they, that the commission would take into consideration myself and my neighbors when voting on this. If we're not in favor of it, I believe it'd be better off if they would find another spot closer to where there is sewer and, and that sort of thing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Good morning. I'm Joan Shields. I live at 27225 South Dakota Highway 11, right to, across Highway 11 to the west of this corner. We have 150 some acres right there. My husband and I got this, bought this farm in 1982. He's passed away in 2019. I wish he was here today because he understands this a lot better than I do. And my main concern again is the water issue. He says that it all goes through Smink's and that. But I can tell you from experience, when we get a heavy rain, there's two culverts from the Bramstedt Field, not necessarily right with this 10 acres, but I get a lot of their water also 'cause it's on a low area where these culverts are, or the culverts would not have been there. And I, I have nothing against them at all or their business. I'm sure they do a fine job. I just don't think this is the place that we want to have it. And I'm also curious, when we met before, Larry had not paid the taxes on this property. And I was just wondering if that has been resolved. Any questions? I mean, I, I feel that I take a real pride in my place, even though it's gotten more difficult for me. But I wanna stay there. I don't wanna have all this commercial that they're saying is going to be developed from Harrisburg, that they wanna come east now. I'm not ready to give up my farmland or my income that I get from that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name's Nikki Ramsey. I live at 47930 Copperwood Circle. I live in a development just about a mile east of this property. There's my development and there's also another development. We have about 16 homes in our development and there's a new development being built right in front of us, west of us. That's out there as well. I'm also Realtor. I moved here about six years ago. And my husband and I bought our property because we liked that it wasn't surrounded by commercial. And I do recognize growth happens and in the six years I've lived here, things have grown a lot. But as a property owner, seeing this start to happen in this area, I question why? And does this make sense for this location? As a Realtor, I recognize the standards that Pride Built has. I do not question that whatsoever. What I question is, is this right for this location? And is it, does it make sense for the area? Do they need these properties? Sure. But should it be here? It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. We do this 10 acres and then what does it lead to? It's just gonna kinda open that can of worms. We live just north of the Lake Alvin there, where you see Oak Ridge Drive. That's our development. And then just across from that, it probably doesn't show up yet because it's a brand-new development, but just in that farm. That's the new development. Yes, thank you. So I live in the area just behind that where the Oak Ridge area is. Most of my neighbors do disagree with having this. We don't want to have commercial property. Yes, a mile seems like a long ways away, but when you live rurally, it's not. We have three entrances to our development, the area here where he's planning to build, just north of that there on 271st and then just south of that there at Lake Alvin at 273rd. So this is a highly visible area for our development and those of us who come and go every day. We do concerns about traffic. We just have concerns overall about the general use of the land and whether or not this is appropriate for this location and this area. And I know that they have done their due diligence with the, with the owners of the property adjacent to and touching the property. But my husband is the HOA president of our development and no one has come and discussed any community plans with us and let us know what's going to be laid out. And I think that as a community member, that would be something that would've gone a long way to come knocking on our doors and say, this is what we're looking to do just outside your neighborhood in a rural community. And at least try to give us some information and help us better understand. But my overall concern at the end of the day is it's just 10 acres today. I'm sure it will be beautifully built. I'm sure it will be great. But then what comes next? And as a community and a development and a neighborhood with families and children who just wanna live a quiet, peaceful, somewhat rural life, this is somewhat, are very concerning for us and our property values moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Darryl Leonard. I live at 47931 Oak Ridge Place, Harrisburg. I live in the same development that Nikki does. I don't think anybody's questioning the quality of work they do. I don't think anybody's questioning the type of company that they are and who to represent. I think the biggest issue here really has to do with, should it be rezoned at this point in time? Is, is the time right to go from ag to commercial and why? And are there not other commercial sites available in Harrisburg with the infrastructure already in place? Planning Commission, when I was at their meeting, voted it down 5-0 for a couple of reasons. One is the concern with traffic. Two, the whole issue of just, is now the time to rezone? Three, and we talked about it here and they've done a lot better, I think, and that's the drainage issue. But the commission at that time asked them to meet with the adjacent property owners, come up with a plan and approve it. Now, it sounds like they met last night and have a start, but I don't think they have a plan that's been agreed upon. So I just don't know now if the time is right until at least that part happens. In defense of the people who have their property owners, I'm not as concerned from a drainage issue. I'm more concerned just from a commercial development standpoint.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition? And I just ask that we not repeat everything, you know, if there's other people, don't, I don't wanna rehash the same thing over and over again. All right, seeing none. Matt, do you, do you or does anybody with you wanna come up and address anything that was brought forward and the people that spoke in opposition? Specifically the traffic, the traffic issue I'd like to hear about and I think the board would appreciate that as well as any more specifics that you have about the drainage issues going forward.
Good morning. Aaron Norman, 3800 West 53rd Street, Sioux Falls. The civil engineer surveyor for Matt on this project. I can make Matt talk a little bit more what he thinks the traffic will be with his proposed tenants. And I can speak a little bit more on our drainage and kinda the design we laid out and presented to the Planning Commission. And I can speak a little bit more on our drainage and kind of the design we laid out and presented to the planning commission. Just to note, Matt's looking at buying 10 acres here. Of that, .75 acres will be road right away to the north that we can't do anything with. And there'll be about 2.1 acres of pond around the perimeter. So we're leaving about a little over seven acres of actual probably usable ground for these buildings. In analyzing the site, we did a topo survey of the site, figured out where the drainage patterns are going today. Like everybody said, it does want to go south down along the highway right away to a low spot where a culvert crosses Highway 11. The site right now is partially row crop, some upland grasses, and there's some field material in there. So we kind of analyzed what that drainage model does today and generated a flow that comes from the site as it exists today. Using that information, we took our proposed design and figured out, you know, we're going to have a little over seven acres of impervious that potential. What's that increase in runoff do? Where do we got to slow down? So we designed that and then doing one large linear pond at the bottom, we kind of wrapped it around the site. It gives everybody on that, those lots a place to outlet their drainage and so they don't flood their neighbors. And that pond, like I said, has got a footprint overall filling about two acres. We did that slowing the water down. I think we had a proposed like a 30 inch pipe and it's relatively flat, site's flat, so it's at a half percent. And instead of, you know, we talked about maybe a couple of discharge points, but we figured if we're going to have this confined waters, get it close to the right of way ditch away from the field as much as possible. Like I said, Larry owns the parent parcel of this and that's kind of how we talked with him on a proposed drainage. Plans were submitted to City Harrisburg, they had, you know, some comments, more of the development and we'll address those, you know, as we get through the preliminary plan phase with Harrisburg if this is approved. I know one of the comments was the traffic, moving that access approach far east as possible away from Highway 11 to keep turning movements and traffic patterns, you know, away from that intersection. I guess back to the drainage, the site up there at the intersection, 272nd Highway 11, that's kind of the high spot of the site. There's no culvert underneath 272nd, the water wants to run, work its way south. I guess with that, anybody have any questions with the drainage?
Anybody have any question?
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Addressing the drainage question, you, you're holding about two acres and metering that out. Will that two acres completely drain once allowed to do so?
Right, it's a, yeah, a detention pond, so we do have a release rate on that, yeah.
And then on a, how long will it take to release through the pipe, do you know?
It's relatively flat bottom. We don't have much slope there. It's about at a half percent best. It's going to come out slow, but it's release rate of, I think it's 40 hours.
And then on the just discharge outside of that property then, is it going into what I refer to as a blue line, which is a dedicated channel?
We're trying to get it towards the ditch of the, of.
And will it stand? And we have had this situation over the years as municipality have grown and stuff where, where yes, they detention is developed, but then it drains slowly instead of a wash off. So then that farmland or whatever property is not usable for a period of time versus just being a couple of days after a rain event. So I guess my question, you're, you're doing a great job at trying to do a lot of the engineering for the drainage, but then we need to address when it leaves there, what effect? And am I incorrect in stating that we're not quite there as having that, that pipe or something? That was discussed by a couple of members, developed completely where it won't affect downstream?
Right, I know they're, I'll have to maybe refer to Matt and the owner on that. I was involved in those conversations.
You're not involved with that? Okay, all right, thank you for your answer.
Erin, where's the current discharge point?
It'd be on the southwest corner of the proposed development.
And where would it discharge on to?
Larry's property.
Okay. And, okay, got it. Toby, can you pull back up the map that shows flood plain? So if I understand right, Erin, the discharge point's going to be kind of right there where that number 11 is that shows, you know, Highway 11? Is that the discharge point or is it the other side?
It'll be north further.
About there in the middle? Okay, all right. And it discharges into the public right of way, the ditch?
It'll follow, go onto Larry's ground and follow the grade down to the low spot there.
But in the ditch that's on the side of the road, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Erin, this surrounds your entire, entire property? Is that holding pond concept goes around the entire, all four corners or whatever?
Pretty much, yep.
What's the depth of that?
So in a big rainfall event, we have three foot.
Two feet.
Three foot, three foot from the bottom to the top, yep.
The question is, what, in discussion, maybe you can answer this. In discussion with you, you, I think Norm mentioned many different options. Has there been any concrete idea on a grassway or added, added tiling? Or anything to alleviate the water when it does come out of this pipe? So that it doesn't, as Commissioner Poppen says, sits? Because it is a flat area and it doesn't want to drain very well. But is there any major discussion that you've really solidified around or anything like that? Do you have preferences, having listened to the Schminks or for yourself as a matter of fact? Because I do believe, you know, you're trying to be a good neighbor here, so. But I mean, has there been any plan that has been come forward that has taken a priority over another?
If you want, yeah. That's not a question directed at Erin.
Well, Matt, started with Matt, he's the engineer.
Okay.
Although he went to state.
And that's not your question. That's not your question, is it?
Anyway.
So who wants to address that question?
Who wants Matt or whoever?
Come on up, Matt. We're going to go about three more minutes and we're going to end the public hearing, so.
I can speak to the future drainage. That's things that we will have to work with these landowners if they would work with us in future developments. The 10 acres that is designed right now is designed to release this water into the area it is currently going right now at a slower rate, slowing down the water downstream currently. So we're actually improving water flow to all neighbors, Myron, Mike, and the Spinks at this point with the current engineering on this, this property. Distance for communication, we had never done a rezoning previous to this. And based off of the commission's suggestion to reach out to neighboring properties, we thought that that was immediate neighboring properties. So listening to them say that we should have came to them, I agree, we probably should have gone to that neighborhood. We just didn't know in what distance we should be traveling away from this to have these conversations. So we would have definitely gone to the president of that HOA and had a conversation. Because Cameron Rasmussen, she is actually in the neighborhood that is just south of the neighborhood that they live in. She is for the, the rezone. This area, there was a lot of concern about, should this be commercial? Is the timing right? What will this land be? It is already pre-zoned, pre-annexed by the city of Harrisburg as light industrial. That is worst case scenario for land and property. We are proposing to have this be commercial. And Harrisburg tells us that when land does rezone commercial, all the property around it increases in value. Whether it be a farm or just bare land, the property itself increases. And as far as traffic goes, we work and build in this neighborhood currently. We've done one, we finished that one, we do another, we're talking with two more property owners. So the impact of more, more traffic in that area is zero. Because the people that are looking to purchase this already work in this neighborhood and are already driving on that road and using those facilities. So there's no more traffic. We're there five days a week currently going in and out. Our subcontractors are going in and out of that road currently right now. So the impact of more traffic, there's not going to be any more. The people that work on our projects are the people that are looking to purchase these other seven lots.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, at this point, I would like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the rezone.
I'll move to motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I believe the motion fails.
Well, just. Is anyone considering seconding the motion?
Well, I think we should have our discussion amongst ourselves. Everybody sits here mute.
Well, I'm just looking for the motion.
I will, I'll second the court discussion.
Thank you.
Because I do think we got to air this thing. So let's, let's everybody speak up.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd like to hear from the commissioners where they, what, what they think. I mean, we all can sit here. You know, I'll just express here, I know, I know the concerns that the neighbors have. I know the concerns that if you live in a rural area and you had a development, maybe the, the drainage issue can be addressed. I think you can, you can work on that. You can work on drainage and find ways to slow down water and, and stuff. Whether it's tiling or all that kind of stuff. And, and now we are praying for rain in these days. The question is, is this a proper place? Because we look at it, if you live in a home or in a development, do you want to see commercial come in to that area? Because granted, it may increase. Now, we look at it from the standpoint from the city of Harrisburg, they've already rezoned this thing. Because they want that kind of stuff. Why? Because commercial, taxes, pay, pay more taxes, support their school system. So you sit here and you evaluate that. So the question is, is this going to be? This area is going to continue to grow whether we turn this down or whether we approve it. It's going to grow. I mean, it is alive. If you look at the future growth plans of Sioux Falls or Harrisburg, this, this, this land is, 10 years from now, we won't even recognize it. So consequently, I'm sitting here saying, okay, what's the best use? How do we foster? How do we take in all these considerations? So before I cast my vote for or against, I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners what they have to say. Because I'm uncomfortable without just sitting here mute. So what do you think?
I think at some point, you're right. This is going to be, it's going to be something. I don't think it's going to stay agricultural because it's so close to the city of Harrisburg and has been brought up. The city of Harrisburg is already in favor of this. It meets their comprehensive plan. It appears to me that the developer wants to work on the drainage issues with the landowners. And I don't think he has any ill will there. I, so I'm, I'm for it. So those are my two cents.
Since it's my motion, I'm reserving Madam Chair's speak last if I could.
That's okay.
I'm good with that. Commissioner Aaron's?
Well, I think Mike Bramstedt brought up some interesting comments. He said, there's people who want change and there's people who don't want change. But I wouldn't equate people who don't want change with not being successful. Sometimes people don't want change because they're worried that it will harm their property. And here, there's a lack of plans, concrete plans that have been put into effect that can give people the satisfaction they need in order to make change. And the problem we have here is procedurally, the county has to make the decision to rezone, but it's up to an entirely different board as to how the property is going to be governed. And we've asked the city of Harrisburg for a year and a half, two years now, to engage in joint jurisdiction. And they haven't done so. And we've talked with them. Toby and I have talked with them about this. I want to support the rezone because we need to get on with economic development moving forward. The problem is, is I'm being asked to make a decision that I don't have total control over the consequences. We have to subordinate, subordinate ourselves to another board. And it's like when I asked Mr. Schmink, do you live within the city of Harrisburg? Nope, he can't even vote for the people who are going to make the decision. It's like taxation without representation, right? He's got no influence with those people whatsoever. So the only thing that the people like Mr. Schmink have is to come to this board and say, hey, hold on, guys. I would prefer to make this decision holistically. You know, joint city council meeting with the county commission. Unfortunately, it's just not how the system is set up and it's wrong. It's, it's wrong for you, it's not fair to you, Mr. Roach. And it's not fair to the people who live out there and it's not fair to the city. Because we shouldn't be forced to make decisions while wearing handcuffs with a gun to our head. So like I said, if there were more concrete plans, like what Commissioner Schmidt was talking about of working with the neighbors. And I do think, I'm looking at your buildings, they're fantastic. You know, these are not like metal pole barn contractor shops, not at all. Do I think that we could adequately protect the housing division to the, to the east? I do. I don't think that this is necessarily spot zoning, given the fact that it's on the highway. Yeah, I understand it's ag land, but if you're within, if you're between Harrisburg and Sioux Falls today, there is a built-in assumption that ag land is going to be sold, as it is in this case, by the Bramstedts. So it's not as if we need to protect farmers and agricultural development, which I think this commission has done a good job of. Because, because first of all, we got a willing buyer and a willing seller here. So I don't think it's an issue of having to protect ag land or, or whatnot. What I'm concerned about is the drainage issue. And what I would like to do is to, is to be able to make this decision in conjunction with the city of Harrisburg. I don't even know if that's possible legally. But if I could wave my magic wand, that's what I would do. Because then I could assure that my vote in support of your rezone would protect the downstream landowners and allow you to be able to do development at the same time. And then also, I think what I would probably do is I'd probably build in some landscaping requirements for you guys, given the fact that there is a housing develop, you know, normally you don't see commercial development within a mile of a housing. Right? And so I'm talking how, I'm talking landscaping like berms trees and things like that, not just grass and like little one-inch willow trees or something like that on the property, which I kind of think is the direction Lincoln County is going. And I think you guys are here in good faith and you are bending over backwards. But I think the one flawed area we have is this drainage piece. And I don't even know if, if the drainage can. And I don't even know if, if the drainage concerns voiced by the opponents are as bad as what they say it is. And I don't know if it's as, if it's gonna be as good as what you say it is, right? But we do have an engineer who just got up here and testified that, you know, it's two acres of detention. It's gonna meter out at about 40 hours in a heavy rainstorm event. So that's pretty good testimony and hopefully the opponents have listened to that. But, um, so the one piece that I want to get fixed is where is the water gonna go? How are we gonna do it? It's gonna be in a pipe? Does you need a permit for the pipe? If we could fix that, I could vote for you hands down today. No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. Commissioner Gibbon, any last word?
I agree, the only thing constant in life is change. And, uh, you know, these are changing times for a number of things. However, uh, I do feel the frustration also as an agricultural producer farming by a nearby metropolitan area of my father-in-law's property. Drainage is an issue and it's very frustrating. And, uh, I know tiling is helping with many drainage issues and so on and so forth. I guess the concern I have is that our, our planning and zoning basically voted 0.5 on this. And I just really question if we're far enough along yet in this process right now, today, to possibly support this.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep it brief, Madam Chair.
Please.
It probably won't happen though. I, I want to thank everyone that's came here today. This is awesome, actually, to have people come forth and speak what's on their mind. Because rarely do we get to hear this. Mr. Schmink, known you a long time. You know, I farm. You know, I feel the same frustration. I don't know exactly how you're enthusiastic, you're about change or not, but it's happened over your and my lifetime and it will continue to do so. So how do we try to prepare and do the best we can? We try to see by, by our mistakes, how we can do things better. Mr. Roach, I think you've done amazing so far. We're almost there to, to try to mend the, the avenue between both the ag sector, which is where the change is happening, and the development side that's coming from Sioux Falls to Harrisburg. I'm actually going to ask the board to consider a motion to table so we can maybe get a little bit farther as I move on. And Madam Chair, I do apologize, but I do have to keep going. I'll apologize.
Been at it for over an hour, so why stop now?
So, we're almost there. But one of the things that, that really frustrates is what Commissioner Aaron's alluded to is that this is an area that we get to decide what the land gets to be used for, but we don't get to decide how to do it. And that's extremely frustrating. And, um, and it's not the only area. So our options are not to do anything within this area of municipalities or try to mend this, this error that we have. I hope Commissioner Aaron's and I can work together and, because we both are adamant about this being of, an issue. I sat on the commission with Commissioner Schmidt when we did joint jurisdiction with the city of Sioux Falls. It's not perfect, um, but I think it's helped, um, move us forward. I hope we can do that with the other communities and I think we have to refine some things with the joint jurisdiction of the city of Sioux Falls. But this is what I'm gonna say to those areas that are in opposition of this. The area is gonna change. And I don't know that I would want it to be in the control of anybody else at this point because I believe that he is, that this party is trying to do the best that he can. But that being said, what I don't like is that it's such a small track. I actually prefer larger tracks because then we can see a larger picture. We look at this and it is, falls under the term spot zoning. If you're gonna address, Madam Chair would have to recognize you. Madam Chair would have to recognize you first. And, uh, so we're, we're getting through a lot of this. But I am going to motion to table this for one month so that there might be an opportunity to get some of the drainage issues that have been raised at least, uh, addressed a little more clearly with the neighbors in the, uh, in the vicinity, so. I'll end with that motion to table for one month.
Second, if we're even able to recognize that motion.
No, actually, a tabling.
I think it's a privileged motion, isn't it? So I don't know. I'll second the motion then.
Any further discussion?
I have one.
Go ahead.
While in one month, while in one month, we like, commissioners, they all like to talk too much. I'd like to say, tell Commissioner Aaron's, you know, when we talk about the frustration we have with our municipalities, amen. It would be nice to do this and I hope you all understand that. But we won't in one month resolve the issue with the city of Harrisburg on who controls what goes on. We won't. If we vote in favor of this in one month and you've addressed the drainage issues and Norm, you got some kind of magic formula to get the water out of your ground? Eh, okay. But we still have not addressed the issue where Harrisburg is ultimately gonna say what this thing is all about. And again, repeat, you got no representation. So consequently, we can do the best we can. So in one month, I hope you get this resolved because I'm ready to vote on that issue and take care of that. But I will support your, uh, motion, Commissioner Poppins, for, uh, table this for one month. And I'm glad you made the motion because I've been accused of this many times myself.
Madam Chair?
I concur with Commissioner Schmidt because nothing is going to change with the rezon request. We don't control anything. We don't have jurisdiction over the drainage. Tabling it, in my view, is, makes no sense whatsoever.
I wasn't gonna comment, now I do have to. Commissioner, I yield to Commissioner Gibbon first.
Yes, what, what direction are we giving them? We're saying in a month, but...
This is what I'll address if I may, Mr. President. So, and, and again, we don't have control with the city of Harrisburg. We will not resolve what's going to be. Well, what they can do is they can hold, they held a meeting. They can address it with the neighbors without the municipality, um, and figure it out.
I don't see why we need to hold up our vote, though. They can do that anyway and they're gonna need to do it.
If we, if we've approved it prior to them resolving any issues drainage-wise with the neighbors, then we don't have a choice at that point. And the city completely has. Once we've approved it or denied it, it's done, so.
I'm gonna let Mr. Roach speak one more time and then we're gonna vote on this motion to table, which I will be voting no on.
I am, I am with Commissioner Landine. I am fully open and I know Dan, my business partner, is fully open with working with Norm. We already have full approval with Myron going through his property. So with Myron Bramstedt, there is zero issue with drainage and working with us. And I know farmers have a word that a handshake is a deal. And that's why we had so many people speak to mine and Dan's integrity. This is not something that we're gonna walk away from. So you have my word on record that I'm willing to and Dan is willing to work with Norman moving forward, should you vote today and not table it. Because I just don't foresee 30 days, 45 days, 60 days helping this situation at all, knowing that Harrisburg has the end-all, be-all on our drainage plan.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion on the table to table this. So I suppose, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Motion carries. Stable. For one month? When would we be having?
It'll be June 22nd meeting?
June 22nd meeting?
Yep.
I don't think you need to bring us anything unless you've got some more information about drainage. I'm not gonna take any more testimony in favor or against. This was our public hearing.
Thank you for coming. It's a process. Madam Chair, I just want to tell the engineer that I have no doubt that they have the best engineering course at SDSU. My son went there. After that, it falls off.
I've, I've spoken, Madam Chair, a little bit about the fact that my daughter is going there, so I have to give them a little credit.
My husband's an engineer that graduated from there.
So there we go. We do believe that they can do some mathematics.
Well, they're not an Augustana, let's face it.
All right.
We're having fun with it.
We're moving on, we're moving on.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you everyone.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Uh, June 22nd, we're gonna make a decision on this.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. It's a great deal.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. We'll get it figured out.
Hey, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Hey, you went the extra mile. Norm, thank you. Take care.
Thank you. All right.
Nothing like emptying a room, Madam Chair.
All right. I think we have somebody here to talk about our master drainage plan.
He looks familiar.
Have we got this done yet?
Toby, are you gonna tee this up or?
No, I think that's it.
Well, I think you probably did. I think everybody's had an opportunity to look at the drainage plan, so...
Ready?
Yes. After that, yes, I am. Go ahead.
Seems to be a current topic. Well, here's the plan. It's got a good thump factor if you drop it. I'm Kent Torby with Wank Associates out of Minneapolis. Our company was purchased by a company called Stan Tech. So our name will change over the next year or two. And I've been out here for two years. And we were under contract to work on a master drainage plan. And we are at the point of adoption. And this is a big deal. First one that is authorized under state statute. First one for the county. Yes, you are authorized under state statute to manage drainage and you meet as a drainage board. So the purpose of the plan then is, once you have a plan, then you can get more in the game of development reviews, which you just heard about. So I will breeze through this fairly quickly. I know I've been in front of you a lot and, uh, so today I'll just focus on the plan itself and the structure. If any of the citizens beam it up on the website. So again, why did we do a plan? You just heard it, changing landscape. And I've just covered all three, three of those bullets, so I won't do it again. We'll get moving here. What I always remind you is that this was built from the ground up. We didn't come out and say, here's a plan and how do you fit? We came out and heard your citizens and said, let's build a plan. We also have a technical committee. So engineers, public sta- public city staff can sit around the table and during the day, we could bounce things off on a technical basis. You've seen this. This is our three-legged stool. We're on the left leg, process and planning. And a balanced drainage management requires three things. So here's the table of contents. And for the first year, we worked on items one through four. So that was 2019. 2020, we kicked off and we got into the data. It's a good data set. We used a lot of other people's data. And implementation, doing capital project. So in there, 19 was one through four. 20, we went hard on data and COVID hits, but it's in front of us in 2021. So the priority issues. And there were a lot of words from the residents and we kind of did a word cloud and we would bring in a lot of words into these six issues. For example, a clogged culvert. We put it under erosion or maintenance. So you might hear different words regarding drainage. They're covered in here. So this is, again, the last addition was chapter five and data. And I enjoy data and it helps that your plan, your process is backed up by data. If anybody has a question on why did we use this or that in a review? We can go back to this. And I like that it's not our data. You can see the different alphabet soup up there. There's a lot of good science out there, so let's use it. And a slide you've seen before is, as we heard about this from people, we have seen the 10-year average was up there. 100 years worth of data. And the last 10 years was significantly higher. So here's where we sit. Who manages it? What do we do now? We have floodplain ordinance. And you were just through number two bullet. And then we have the feds and state. So why do we do a plan? And you've heard this before, but I'll say it again. Maybe there's some citizens, because water doesn't care. That's my saying. And it goes where it wants to. It'll go downhill and it crosses properties and cities' lines. But also in our county, it can be managed different. Maybe every raindrop doesn't matter. Here's a schematic we came up with. I think the one cutting through the circles, you know, that could be Nine Mile Creek. And the gray is gray. Cities have subdivision authority. We get the drainage. And the gray is gray. We don't have much authority to go in there at the current time. Cities typically manage their own and we take care of the blue. So we will keep doing what we're doing. And with this plan, we can standardize drainage management based on engineering. And it always brings it down to me a little bit. There's a gentleman up here that owns ground and the engineer came out and said, there's no more water coming off of here after than before. You can pick engineering numbers to show that. But it does not pass the smell test. And I just think it's not right for county residents or any residents to be told that. And also, so I'm a fan of counties getting in the game. Otherwise, you're, this private citizen has, otherwise it's a civil matter. That one's just personal to me to hear somebody say that.
I have a question. That brings up a point. We sit up here, not being engineers. And engineers come in with data that said they can neutralize the drain, drainage issue. It won't run off any faster, won't run off any slower, there won't be any impact. How are we to decide if that's fact or not? I, that's been a frustration for me for a long time because it doesn't make any sense if you have a development and you have rooftops and you have driveways. If you're, if you're a residential development, water's gonna run off a heck of a lot faster. So from your estimation, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but just a quick caveat.
It's exactly where we want to get, especially in the grade. But we will standardize what can be used. We, the county, will standardize. You can use A, B, or C. But don't try E, F, and G.
Okay.
You can and you submit and we send it back. And then we get into staff applicant meetings. And I've been in them. Called stuff, killing development, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Well, okay, but our citizens' experience is we're getting more water from land use changes. And I don't think I'm out on a limb. So that's what we'll do day to day for the next 40 years. Keep that going. Standardize it and so one city doesn't think another city's getting a break and it... You're getting in the game, it's gonna ruffle some feathers, but you're gonna calm some stuff down over the long term. People will know we are fair or equally unfair and I don't care how imbued. We're just gonna standardize it. So then we got into chapter six. And as we get into projects or the other leg of the stool, implementation helps us do that. It's helped, it helps to have flooding projects or the topic listed in a plan. If some FEMA money pops up, they say, well, have you thought about this before? You say, yeah, we've got it covered in six, and here's the table, and how about we could take a look at it? So, it helps you when you move up the chain. In addition, it gives your citizens, if somebody had a localized drainage problem, we've kinda laid out, we'll approach the county, and we'll see if it can fit on our CIP. We're not saying it's gonna get funded, but it gives people a voice, it gives them a way to have their concern heard, but it doesn't automatically say we're gonna engineer it. Get on the list. Education's one of the best. Any opportunity you have to promote, fund, help education while you're in the drainage game, that's one of the best. Probably generational. Let's get the next generation going on why we're in the game.
Kent, just for a second, if I may, Madam Chair, could you elaborate on what projects that we've implemented so far?
So, we've just started taking a look at a few projects.
But have we implemented anything? Because I've noticed that we're going through sloughs now that are completely dry, and a year ago, this is Levity, sorry, folks, that you've done a great job, because we have no drainage issues in the county at all right now, because it just won't rain, so.
Usually, you kick this off, you hit a drought, so.
Perfect. Should've done this three years ago.
We haven't done any projects, I think you did Spring Creek a few years ago, and that was multi-agency and things like that, so we haven't done.
Trying to be funny.
We haven't done any projects.
Nothing new with that.
It failed.
And I just talked about that, letting somebody in, in the door, gives citizens a chance, townships, cities, we can all tackle things together. Here's what you're going through on a day-by-day, and this is what's missing right now, is the detention calculations, the hatched area. They're dug down low, and again, the calculations show, see, we have detention, but they're not effective in the spring melt, and when you have wet conditions, anything low is not effective. So, we do the calculations, so that detention storage, that hatched area, it's standardized, and the amount of water out of the pipe is what was coming off corn and beans right before that. But you gotta build the bathtub big enough. We are either not building bathtubs now, or they're, the calculations are a little cooked, so the bathtub's too small. And we will standardize that. So, that's it, I kinda came through quick, but I just, again, I wanna iterate, this is a big thing, to adopt the first drainage plan for your county with what you're facing as far as the economy and land use changes, and that's not going away. So, getting in the game, getting in the gray area is a big step. And as I said, there'll be some feathers that are ruffled, and but that's us as staff's business. The day-to-day business is us. You should not be having to answer technical questions or the fallout of approving something when somebody gave you a presentation that was not accurate. So, that's not where you should be. And that's the way it is, we just wanna get that off your plate, down into staff and engineering. But you need to start with a plan. You can't start with an ordinance. Plan gives you the right to have an ordinance, so that would be a next process. So, I encourage you to get into it. I don't know anything else other than to say to that. Probably put you in an awkward situation with somebody, you know, I'm sure around budget time, you're not, or you're under pressure to keep it tight and keep it low, so this'll be a budget item, and we're already in the budget, so we'll keep her going. But I'm a fan of good planning, it lets us standardize tough topics. You standardize your roads, standardize your drainage.
Thank you, Kent.
Okay.
I think this is a good first step in moving toward, you know, helping us make decisions regarding land utilization, and being able to rely on the engineers and staff to, to make recommendations to us that make sense with what the drainage situation is in the county. So, I would ask for a motion to adopt the 2021 master drainage plan.
This is a public hearing now.
We are having a public hearing, all right. Well, who would like to speak in favor of it? Who would like to speak against it? Okay, then I'm gonna.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Thanks. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins?
Just for clarification, what real teeth does this have, Toby, as far as what developers or land use changes will have to be implemented?
So, as was mentioned, this is the framework for the beginning of, this is any one. I mean, the next phase we're currently starting to work on is an actual ordinance.
Yes, so where are we at on that? That's, I mean, that's what will have the teeth, is the actual ordinance.
Correct, we have to wait till this is adopted, then we can formally start that process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I think adopting this plan is pretty similar to like when we adopted the transportation master plan. You know, we adopt it, we say it's our plan, but until we actually put it into force and effect, the plan is just a plan. But I think we're required to do it anyway, before we can get to the ordinance process, so.
Anybody else have anything they wanna ask or say?
I was just going to comment, Madam Chair, is that it, this is a lot like goal setting and so forth, I think it's a good idea, and then you base your decisions based on what your goals are, and, and a plan in place, obviously, you need to start somewhere, and I think this would be very helpful.
Thank you. Sean, do we have a, we have a motion to adopt times two? You wanna call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Kent.
Kent, thank you.
Two, three years of work, so.
Yeah, it was a long time coming.
Thank you for letting us proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, Julia.
Two items for your consideration this morning, the first is to hire Carter Thompson as a full-time system administrator with the IT department at 2557 per hour, effective today, the 25th of May.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And lastly, is the resignation of Don Erickson for the Highway Department, effective the 27th of May.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could we move up agenda item number 13? Because I think I'm gonna have to be leaving here fairly shortly in order to go to court in Sioux Falls.
And.
If you're open to that, I'm open to answer Commissioner Poppins' questions, or anybody else's for that matter.
I am open to that, and in that, what, let's go, let's go to items 12 and 13, because those are somewhat related to each other, if we could. I'm gonna address item 12, which I'm gonna be really brief. I'm essentially, I'm just gonna read the email that I got from the Minnehaha County Commissioners. It just says, wanted to follow up on the request for Minnehaha County Courtrooms to be used by the Lincoln County Courts. The courthouse is a very specialized building with security that is comprised of certified law enforcement officers. In identifying a lease rate, we looked at the cost of maintaining the building, along with the annualized cost of security. For reference, the 2020 maintenance, cleaning, and utility expenses of the courthouse was $547,000, 54759 to be exact. And the annualized cost of security for 2021 is $760,636, for a total cost of $1.307 million. These costs do not include the cost of parking, insurance, or depreciation. Minnehaha County is offering a lease rate of $8,333 a month, for an annual rate of $100,000. Terms would be a one-year lease. If the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners is interested in pursuing a lease, please advise, and we will draw up a lease. So, that is an item that we have on our agenda, there's, you know, nothing has been drawn up yet, but just wanted to gauge the interest of the commission and discuss that a little bit, on whether that's something that we're interested in. I know we're getting, you know, some cases have already been mandated to be moved to Minnehaha County, and this, these monies are a short-term solution, but also a cost-effective solution in the short term, as far as not having to retrofit and fit other spaces with smart courts and things of that nature, and obviously, the security's already in place in Sioux Falls. And I believe this is something that our, our presiding judge is also asking of us to do, so. I would just like to know everybody's thoughts on moving forward with that, and have any, having our deputy state's attorneys, Mr. Golden, work with the county commission in Sioux Falls to come up with a lease agreement. Commissioner Aaron's, do you have anything you'd like to add about that?
Yeah, nobody ever likes to have their hand forced, but unfortunately, because of the growth and development that we've been talking about here for the last two hours this morning, we've got increased demands on our courthouse, and, you know, I think we kind of informally went through the process of trying to figure out how much it would cost to retrofit another courtroom here, and, you know, we just did some back-of-the-envelope math, and the lease rate that we're being quoted here by Minnehaha County is probably fairly competitive with what it would've cost us in order to get a contractor here into the courthouse, and, and, you know, take some existing offices and turn them into courtrooms. So, it's probably pretty competitive, and, yeah, we, we're gonna have to bite the bullet here for a little while, and, but I would say we probably move forward. I mean, I would probably also ask Minnehaha County, though, since this wasn't a, kind of forced upon us by the judiciary in a way, or in a sense, whether or not we can entertain this issue of using the court, or, you know, building into the lease agreement the fact that courtrooms may or not, may, may or may not be used all the time. So, for example, it's like if I rented you a house, well, I'm gonna want the lease check every month, right? But what if built into the lease, there's a situation where somebody else uses the house every weekend? Well, it would be unfair for me to have to pay for the lease if somebody else was using it. That's kind of how courtroom space works, too. This won't be dedicated courtroom space, is my guess, it's going to be ad hoc or as needed. And so, if there are other cases that are taking place in the courtroom up there, wouldn't be entirely fair for us to have to lease it, based on the annualized numbers here, I mean, I understand the logic, but maybe we ought to go back to Minnehaha County and say, yep, conceptually, we can agree upon this, but we also need to take into consideration if there's gonna be other Minnehaha County court cases that take place in those courtrooms. Because knowing how courtroom scheduling works, it, it's, it's chaotic, there's a lot of logistics involved. My hat goes off to the people up there in court admin, who do all the scheduling, but my guess is those two courtrooms won't just be set aside for Lincoln County every single day of the week for the next year. So, I think maybe out of fairness, we ought to just say, look, there ought to be some, something built into the lease agreement if others, Minnehaha County is using the courtroom space as well at the same time. And maybe that's the happy medium here, but.
And I, yeah, and I think that is gonna need to be part of the discussions on what those terms look like as far as, you know, the space that we're gonna have and how it's gonna be allocated. Commissioner Poppins, did you have anything you wanted to say on that issue?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with wanting to do what Commissioner Aaron's, as far as negotiating, the unfortunate part is we don't have much to negotiate with. If we renovate space here, it may or may not be empty or used all the time. I applaud you for wanting to do that, what I, what we risk is them retracting the offer, and right now, I don't know that we have any other options to really consider, so.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add on that issue? All right, so.
Let's call the question.
Well, we're not, we're not voting right now, we don't have a, we don't have a contract.
Did you have a motion? No, well, I'm, I'm thankful of the fact that they entertained the idea. You know, they wouldn't, they have, their courtrooms are under siege as well, with limited amount of time.
I think we have to thank the judge for working, I think diligently on.
They are, and I think this is a very short-term bandage, so that's gonna take us into our next topic, but my, what I'm gathering is you want us to go ahead and have our, get the ball rolling, and see if we can come up with an agreement that everybody's okay with.
Please, Madam Chair.
So, well, then we'll go on to item 13, which, again, I think, item 12 helps segue into that we need to get this going, we need to get a solution figured out. I think the advisory committee's been very helpful, you know, as far as looking at the issue, and I think what I gathered, at least from the last meeting, was that it, there is an emergency, and that's been identified. So, since that emergency's been identified, I, I think we need to get some findings, and I think we need to get that part, hopefully, moving forward to a solution, because I feel like we're already at least a year, if not two, behind the eight ball on getting the courtrooms that we need. So, with that, Commissioner Aaron's?
Yep.
Or, well, I got both of you here.
Thank you. So, where we're at is Commissioner Schmidt, myself, just finished up last week approving a survey that will go out to members of the committee, but also to members of the public. And then, we communicated what we thought the survey would look like to our deputy state's attorney, Bill Golden, and I believe that that survey is going to be sent out to the public here, or sent out to the members of the committee, as well as to the public shortly. And in speaking with some members of the Cottington County Commission up there in Watertown, where this issue of courthouse improvements and a jail failed on three different votes, the biggest thing that was communicated to me was, make sure you get the input of the public before you go into this, so you can use that to craft your proposal moving forward. And then in doing some of the research, you know, I, I'm talking to county commissioners in South Carolina, and Texas, and Nebraska, they all gave me the advice moving forward is, get on the front end, get the information from your community as to what they wanna see, and they suggested doing it through the use of a survey, and put it on your website, and just put it out to the public, and have the public fill out the survey, so you can kind of figure out what's going on. One of the county commissioners down in Texas told me they got about 700 to 900 responses to their survey, and they, and then they took the results of that survey to each of the county commissioners, and they went out and held meetings or talks with people in each of their districts using that survey, as well as using the needs assessment. We've done a needs assessment, it's pretty clear, the writing is on the wall, we need more courtroom space. What we don't know yet is how that's gonna take place. Remodel, get rid of the old courthouse, put a new one in its place, find a new location, find a location inside of Canton, find a location to the north of this building, find a location to the west or east of this building, maybe, maybe a whole new location. I just had somebody call me last week, representing Darcy Johnson, offering up potential land here in Canton. So, there's all kinds of people who are coming at us, making suggestions, and so, it's good to hear. It's good to hear that people are invested in the process. But, like I said, Commissioner Schmidt and I, we just finished up this survey, and so, we wanna push. And so, we wanna push that out to the public now and find out what the public has to say about this. So, that's where we're at today.
So, just a couple of questions, Commissioner Aaron's. So, what's, I, I understand the survey's been done. I haven't seen a copy of it. But what's the turnaround time for getting this all done? Because it sounds like a time-intensive project. And if there's somebody running it, and who's, what's the cost of doing this survey?
There's no cost, because it's all internally controlled. We're gonna put it on our website and, and then send it out to members of the committee. And then it can be just disseminated, you know, by members of the commission, members of the public. We can disseminate it through the media. But it's not like a mailer, like you would send to your house.
Okay.
It's not a mailer. We don't put any stamps on it. It gets put on our website, and then we direct people to our website to go fill it out. So, it's using all dedicated expenses from here in the courthouse, so it's completely free. I would think the turnaround time on that, I guess it's up to the wishes of the committee and the commission. But we would probably want to add a minimum, have 30 days of turnaround on that, so that we can get a pretty good response from the public.
And when do you think that that will be ready to go on the website?
Bill, I'll put you on the spot here.
I have a copy of this survey here. I've been working with IT, and they're gonna go ahead and do a web-based survey. And I think they were working on the questions. We may have to modify them just a little bit in order to get them to fit into that. So, hopefully, it'll be done this week. In fact, I think it was done last night. I just need to go talk to them and look at it, so.
All right, and who, who is gonna be charged with looking at all of these? Let's say we get 700 to 900 of them. I mean, I know we're saying there's no out-of-pocket cost, but there is some cost, because we've gotta have somebody go through them, spend the time to go through them, and come up with some kind of a summary. Is that something the committee, advisory committee is gonna do?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very well. Those are, those were the only questions I had about that. And then I did have this on actually, as Commissioner Poppins, items. So, Commissioner Poppins, what, if anything, do you have to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wanna thank Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Aaron's, and the committee for working on this. But in light of our discussion on number 12 and, and the fact that we are growing in a, in a statements, or multiple statements from the judge saying that, you know, within five years, we're, we're gonna need 10 courtrooms. And that's highly functioning courtrooms. Unfortunately, we are severely lacking. And, and I can appreciate trying to be cautious, but we do have to expedite this process a little bit, Commissioner Aaron's, Commissioner Schmidt, if you can, because it doesn't happen overnight. And I, I've yet to hear anything that's gonna carry us from today until the year, whenever it is completed, whatever that project may or may not be. So, in conjunction with the advisory committee, I think that the board should take serious consideration to do a three-year to five-year plan of how we develop temporary or whatever may be courtrooms to fill the circuit's needs. Because 10 courtrooms doesn't appear overnight, so, thank you.
I'll just add to that. I was in court, actually, Judge, Judge Howman was the judge presiding on the case. And she had mentioned to me that her updated numbers for Lincoln County court cases is actually up 50% from last year. This was when I talked to her. It was probably about a week and a half ago. Anybody else have anything on that agenda item?
And as we make those comments, I'm off to court.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Aaron's. Anybody else have any comments?
Just that, Madam Chair. I do believe that we need to put it on our agenda for the next meeting, that we get the personnel that we need to help us find temporary space. Because this is a one-year offer from Minnehaha County, and it barely buys us the next year, so.
I would, Commissioner Poppins, if, I would hope that this arrangement for one year, I'm sure they're trying to be as cautious as possible, could be renewed, because our options are extremely limited outside of trying to change the existing offices here, which I think is a short-term, very bad solution. The one thing that I think we have to do is decide on a comprehensive plan. We can look at the 10 years down the road, and I agree with you, you know, the numbers are there. I mean, you know, when you talk about population approaching 100,000 in another decade, you're just not the same county you were. You are a metropolitan county. So, what is our, what should be our basic need? Should we try to build, if we decide we build, is it two courtrooms? Is that our immediate need? Or do we build four courtrooms and we do like Sanford Hospital, you know, continue to be able to build up and up and up? And those are, those are the things that we don't have a choice. But then you come into the, the fact that we have to present to the public, okay, what's the cost going to be? What's, how much taxes are going to be incurred by the average household? And to have them understand that we don't have a choice. I mean, it's not, we're just not dreaming this up. The court says you will have adequate space, or we will provide that space, and then we pay. So, it isn't, it isn't, you know, the wish list, that'd be too great. We have to provide. And I think the public has to understand that the county, that's just part of the constitution. And the county has to understand, we're gonna do the best we can for the least amount of money we can, so that the support can be generated when you put this to a vote, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schmidt, has there been enough to, or any discussion that there's any doubt that we need 10 courtrooms that are functioning within five years? As, as the judge has indicated?
I have not talked with Judge Howman on that issue, Mike, so I can't answer that.
So, the committee hasn't had that?
She talked the last time she was here. I think she talked about eight to 10. And I don't know if the timeline was five years or longer. There's members of the committee, five to 10 years, I think that was.
My understanding is that it was 10 years. And I mean, even the building that we're sitting in now was built in, what, 2008? And it's already inadequate for our needs, and nobody expected that back in 2008. But here we are with the same type of problem that we had back then. And our court case is up 50% over last year. So, you know, I think we need to look at the long-term picture and build something that maybe is bigger than what we think we need, which obviously didn't happen in 2008. Or maybe, maybe we thought this was bigger than what we needed, and it would, you know, last long into the future. But it doesn't look like that's the case right now, so.
You know, we talk about putting things on our website. So, our check to Minnehaha County for jail last month was what? How much was that?
Last month, I don't know, but I'd say average is 150 to 180, isn't it?
What was our, what was our bill last week, our last month?
Do you want me to go pull the claims that you signed?
No. Can you give us a ballpark figure? 130, 140,000?
Yeah, I'd say 130 to 180.
It just averaged.
And that's just for renting prisoner space? Okay, all right. I'm done. I'll be quiet.
Really? Okay.
I, I would like a comment, if, if he'd be willing to offer, from our buildings and grounds superintendent, what resources he would need to try to look at, to create space or find space? If you were, if he was told in a week to find three spaces for courtrooms outside of this, either in or outside of this building, what resources do you need to, to work on that? It's not an easy task, I understand. And thank you for commenting, given that you're coming up. Since I didn't tell you, I was gonna ask you that ahead of time.
What a possible question.
Ask me a, a question that it's, I, I'm not sure what kind of answer I would give you on that. I mean,
Do you need architectural assistance? Do you need space coordinator assistance? What, 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 what would you need to try to find space or create space?
I mean, it's, it's something I've been, you know, I'm always kind of looking at. But it's, you know, I'd have to take all my direct focus for at least a week, probably, to resolve that question, you know, and, and then the, you know, it, what happens is I, I seek out and I find space that's available, and then I have to have input from all of you. So, it's, it's hard to say that anything could be accomplished in one week.
No, I'm not asking for it to be developed. Excuse me, Madam Chair. I'm just asking, you know, personnel-wise or informational-wise, what would you need to, to have to make these decisions or suggestions? Going back to a, a different architectural plan assistance or a plan, space needs assistance or something like that? If, if, or can you do it completely on your own?
I, I mean, I think I could probably do it fairly well on my own with assistance of Bill. And, you know, I'd, I'd reach out to architects for some advice, probably, but I think I could probably research it on my own.
Well, and I certainly don't think we can discount the judiciary and what they consider to be adequate. Because that's what the statute requires.
That, that's where I would have to have Bill's help with it, because, and I know Bill, Bill's busy, too. So, I would definitely need to have somebody on the court side or state's attorney's side that would know the requirements for a courtroom, so.
You also have to have the UJS on board, because they're, they, they provide all of the electronic, the IT, the smart court. And I know that our, the current judiciary is not interested in spending a lot of money on those, you know, putting a Band-Aid on stuff as far as the cost to the UJS.
Right.
So, that would have to be hat in hand with them and something that they would be also willing to spend money on, which, right now, I don't foresee being in this building.
Basically, John, what I've been trying to ask you is, we need to have a plan ready for when, from now until if and when something actually does get built that carries us past our current courtrooms. And, and hopefully, Minnehaha County will allow us to extend, because if we're gonna build something, even remodel something, we're not gonna have it done in a year. So, we, we really need to develop something that's carrying us for three years, I would think, until something long-term is, is figured out, so. And unless I'm not aware of it, we don't have that in place right now, do we?
We do not.
Yeah.
Thank you, John, just.
Thanks, John.
I know we're kind of going a little backwards here, but you're standing there, and we've been running a while. So, do you wanna just touch on items 10 and 11 on the agenda, please?
Let me go ahead and have Wendy come in and the 4H people then.
Is she here?
Yeah, she is, yeah.
Yeah, if you can do that, and then.
Here she comes.
I see her.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Wendy.
All right.
Fire this off, I guess. Uh, we're just gonna head, gonna head, start on achievement days. Do you wanna lead off, if you want?
Sure. Good morning.
Morning, Wendy.
We have with us Katie Wester, who's the president of the Lincoln County Forest Leaders Association.
Welcome.
And then Chad Hazel, who's filling in for his brother Todd on that. And he's also on our Building and Grounds Committee and the foundation. But we just wanted to talk to you about our 2021 Achievement Day plans. We had a leaders' meeting last week to just discuss how we would hold the large animal shows. With no livestock facilities or water in Lennox, the leaders thought that having the large animal shows in Canton would be the best option this year for safety of the animals, as well as the kids, just to keep everybody in one place. I don't know if you guys wanna mention anything else or have questions for us.
That makes sense. I mean, you gotta have, if you're gonna have it, you gotta have, you gotta have the facilities that, to put the animals and make sure that they're safe and watered and everything. So, that makes sense to me.
Are they gonna be showed there, Wendy? Are they gonna be housed there? And then the judging will take place and the sale is, as well?
Yes. So, it would be, the Achievement Day dates are July 25th through July 29th. So, that's a Sunday through Thursday. On Sunday afternoon, evening, it'll be check-in the static exhibits in Lennox. Then Monday morning, we would finish check-in for the static exhibits in Lennox, and then start our judging of those exhibits during the day. Livestock could start checking in over here from nine to one on Monday. And then they would have their first shows Monday evening would be dairy cattle and goats, and then sheep and goats. And then Tuesday would be poultry and swine. And then Wednesday would be beef, round robin, and the premium sale. And then we would be done in Canton and go back over to Lennox to do rabbits and companion animals. And then Clover Bud Show and Tell and our 4H barbecue.
All right.
Good point.
Great.
And it's our intention to, we'd like to have the animals there and try to put on a fair, as much as we can, as they're supposed to.
Yeah.
They like that fair experience.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Thank you for the update.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
What will it take to get us so we're not bouncing back and forth?
Money.
John?
Money.
Much money. What's the plan?
All right, well, our goal up until probably about a month ago was still to have everything in Lennox with the hopes of having the show ring built already over there. It became apparent about a month ago that just with, between COVID and everything else, and then the material shortages for construction materials, it was just no way it could happen. So, that's why we went back to the leaders and said, hey, we gotta have a solution of how we can conduct Achievement Days one way or another. So, yeah, I, we're at the point with IMAG that I'm hoping they'll have plans that I can hand off to different dirtwork people. And we're hoping to get moving as quickly as possible on doing the dirtwork. And if that, in fact, happens, then we'll be looking at, moving forward with at least the building of the show ring facility as early as, hur, next year. I, I'm sure you guys have seen with the budget request stuff, I did put a number in for that, even though we don't have full monies for that. But just like everything else in this environment, prices of materials are going up, price of building's going up. So, it's making it a little more difficult for us. So, so yes, we need money. We need, we need to have some more support. But I, I think we're still there, depending on what you, the commission, will allow us, the county, to sponsor as far as part of this, to hopefully have the show ring built by next summer, and maybe more.
And what was estimated cost of the show ring?
Okay, so, a year and a half ago, when we had roughly estimated the price of it, the show ring itself was gonna be about 98,000. After the COVID and the building shortages, a couple of weeks ago, a ballpark figure was 185,000. So, it, it's increased dramatically.
I know. I, sheet of plywood's $54.99 right now, so.
So, that, that's, we were in a position to be able to pay for the, the show ring as the fundraising foundation. We had, we were almost there. I mean, so close that we could give the go-ahead, and we knew we'd have the money by the time it was put up. Now, we have to reevaluate a few things and, and.
Where are we at? Where, where are you guys at on raising funds for the show ring?
About 138, I believe.
That's commendable, yeah.
And the cost is 188?
A hundred, yeah, 185, I think, is what the, just an estimate from Morton was.
Is that the, is that a finished product, or is that just the building materials?
That is put up.
That's put up, okay.
Yep. And then there's a few infrastructure things as far as water and electricity and some concrete and things that are not in that. That's just for the basic show ring. We figured if we had to for a couple of years, we could put some cattle under some tents and some sheep under some tents and make do as best we could, but that's kind of where it is right now.
So, we gotta go out and find a couple of people that wanna put their name on the show ring and make this happen. So we got to go out and find a couple of people that want to put their name on the show ring and, uh, make this happen.
Ideally, yes, that would be wonderful. Okay. So one thing that came up with Engineer when I was meeting with him, that, a number that I was not anticipating, because I did have a number in for the dirt work, but is the utility end of the world of putting the water supply lines in and tanks and whatnot? And that, they're estimating to be a lot more expensive than I ever dreamed and I was closer to an eighty-thousand dollar price range.
John, why is that so expensive? Because I call Southeast, or the Water District as well, why is it so expensive?
I, I'm not sure why that number's so high. I, I mean, it's, there's some of it's, when they're talking utilities, they're talking some of the drainage lines and everything to get the storm water away from the buildings and whatnot. Most of what they're designing is all surface runoff, so there isn't a lot of that, but I'm not sure why that number's that high other than basing it off of the, the experts, I guess, you know?
John, is that water from the city of Lennox or South Lincoln real water?
It would be South Lincoln real water. Um, but that's, you know, you're talking to multiple different feed lines, you know, and, uh, and you're also talking, I think, and that number is another septic system, uh, for the future, you know, we'd want to put that in fairly quickly for the future growth of the shower house bathrooms for out there at that. So that, you know, that by itself could be twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, because if you had to put a mound system in. And we've looked at different options, holding tanks, we've talked about different things. So that number's going to be variable, but, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that's part, a large part of what would make it an eighty-thousand dollar project.
Thank you. Do you want to do your update?
Yeah, I just, it's been a while since I've done a Buildings and Grounds update. Uh, uh, one of the things for as far as courthouse primary here, uh, um, we still have, we did the bat mitigation and as far as I know, we have not had any bats come in except for one. That bat was, uh, hopefully in here hibernating when we did the mitigation and it just moved down, but, uh, I guess that's to be seen. We have not cleaned up anything up there because obviously depending on what we do, it's kind of money that we're spending that, that could be part of a project. But that said, we're looking at this project extending down the road a ways, so do we want, do you want me to reach out and see what it would take to get the bat guano cleaned up up there? And I, I think the only way to do it right would be to remove the insulation and.
I think we have an obligation to look at that.
I, I do have that number in next year's budget, but I would like to see us roll, eh, the issue's going to become very apparent once we start getting heat, heat indexes at a hundred and high humidities and then the bat guano smell will start showing up in the courthouse again.
I think we have a duty and obligation to the people in those courtrooms to do that.
Okay. So I'll, I'll reach out to the, the three contractors I talked to last year and see what kind of number, and I'll, I'll write a spec for doing it the way I'd like to see it done. Um, but otherwise, uh, everything here at the primary courthouse is going pretty well. We've, uh, uh, AC seems to be working pretty well. Um, we are doing, I've, I've got quite a bit of air conditioning improvements written into this year's budget. I'm trying to get at least, uh, uh, some of it scheduled here as soon as possible because of, uh, uh, server room doesn't have any redundancy and we've had our, uh, Liebert AC unit go down a couple of times in the last month. And it creates a lot of issues for, uh, everything to be honest, because Jake has to really shut down things. So I'm trying to push that project and, uh, this, uh, communication room across the hallway to try to get those done as soon as possible. But once again, I'm running into a lot of issues with, with, uh, material costs and just getting contractors that are even willing to, to do it before fall. Um, but, so that, you'll see some numbers probably coming through for, uh, hopefully here soon to ask for approval. I'll just reach out and try to get three bids and we'll move forward with it that way. As far as the highway building is concerned, uh, that con- or that project has also been delayed because of, uh, material delays. The, the fan units are about two weeks out, but otherwise, uh, everything else they're hoping will show up today. Everything's been, they're pretty much at a point where they're ready for the new equipment to be installed, but they've, uh, they've done everything that they could probably do up until this point. Um, so that's about where we're at with that. And, um, um, I was going to lead into, uh, the transfer station, but, uh, I, I see that Commissioner Gibbons has something on there for that already, so I, I, I don't really have any major updates with that other than just was curious where we were at with how we want to proceed. And part of that, I, I have not, uh, we want to, uh, uh, s- we've surplus all the equipment, but we want to, uh, sell off the major equipment like the, the trucks and everything. But I felt like I should probably not move forward with that until we really know what we're going to do with the, the property, because if they, somebody turn around and buys it for, uh, transfer station, or transfer station type facility again, they might want the equipment, so I thought it might be kind of silly to sell the equipment, but.
Well, since we're on that topic, um, our agenda item number six is, uh, the surplus transfer station property, so.
I, I do have one, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we move into that.
Sure.
So, uh, another thing, if you guys looked at my budget request for next year, we have the existing property that we've taken in and, uh, the county took over as tax deed out by the airport. If you're familiar with it, it's a house that's on the north end of the airport. Um, I do want to just throw it out there that I, we're going to go in there, the, uh, uh, John Hanson and Tom and I, we're going to try to get it cleaned up as far as the, the grass and make it to where it's not, uh, you know, basically to try to bring it in within, uh, uh, not being a nuisance property. That said, I want you guys to be aware that, uh, it's kind of become a dumping ground a little bit. The building's pretty much open and unsecure and people throwing mattresses and stuff like that in there. We've got a lot of remnant tires being dumped in there. Now, is this from people occupying space around there? I don't know, but it's going to become a, a problem to us.
We're still in litigation on that, so you're not going over there.
Oh. All right, I remind about that then. Postpone, all right. Um, I guess that's it, we can move on to the transfer station then.
Yeah, let's talk about the transfer station. Commissioner Gibbon, you want to tee that?
Yes, I, I do. Um, as you realize, we surplus the transfer station a few meetings back. Commissioner Schmidt and I went ahead and, uh, had the property appraised. Uh, a written appraisal was given to our, our county auditor in regard to that. Uh, I have been approached, uh, this past ten days by someone, a Lincoln County resident who is interested in that property. He asked me if this property, um, was either for sale or for lease. Uh, as you can see right now, we're currently leasing this property right now. But anyway, uh, if the commission is interested in all in finding out either through sealed bids or through, um, either a public auction, what we can get for this property, uh, I, I know that there is interest in it. And I think that, um, obviously, there's probably more than one individual, two, that might be interested in this. So I guess, uh, I guess, uh, what my thoughts were, that maybe this is something that we should do with a public auction and that we should possibly, um, you know, have a reserve in mind of what we would like to get for this property. And so I guess, uh, since, uh, this is where we're at with it, even though I still continue to get comments and phone calls from those that are wishing that we would bring it back into the budget for next year, uh, I know that, uh, the support isn't there and so, uh, maybe this is a, a time to move this property. And so I guess I would like to move that we, uh, put it up for a public auction.
Other commissioners, thoughts?
Was that a motion?
It's a motion.
It will be a motion.
I'll. Or you can second.
I don't care, as long as he has a second, so we can talk about it.
Well, I second that motion.
So is that, is that property already been surplus? It's already surplus, has it been appraised?
Yep.
We have that done, okay.
You know, the best way to find out what the value of it is, is to put it up for a public auction. You can always protect, you can protect the thing so it doesn't sell for, you know, um, a pittance of what you think it's worth or your assessed value, but you will find out what the public, uh, what it's worth by having a competitive bid.
Do we need to get some idea of cost or proposals on that, on what the fees are going to be?
For a public auction, we do it.
We're going to do it here?
That would, our normal public auction, yeah.
Well, doesn't the auditor do that on the front step?
And she's ecstatic about doing that.
I can do it.
I can tell by the look on her face how ecstatic she is.
Just to throw it out there, we've talked about doing public auctions before and we found when we sold the highway building, the old highway building, our best, well, previous commissioners discussed that the best option was to list it with a realtor instead of public auction. I don't know if that would be a better option, especially if we've already got people that have interest in it.
Did Tote me leave?
I guess I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other.
What's, what are you looking for, Mike?
Uh, what do we currently have the property zoned as?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
What is the property currently zoned as? Is our zoning correct for the type of facility that, because this has been there, did we ever take action to?
I'm looking right now.
I don't know.
We may need to clarify the zoning on it, maybe not, so.
Madam Auditor, is it possible to have one of our, um, benevolent auctioneers that are in, in our Lincoln County just to volunteer their services? Because they certainly come to the 4H and not only do they provide, you know, great, the, I don't know, Wendy, they've always volunteered their services, Westra has.
There's probably a difference between 4H and selling a property.
Yeah, I.
I don't think that.
I got ideas on that too, but I don't understand anything, but.
I would actually us prefer to, uh, do an RFP from, um, real estate agents that deal in commercial real estate to take a look at this and present an option versus doing an auction in our steps. The market is ridiculous right now for if this is zoned commercial or light industrial, which it should be based on its previous use. And Sean's going to tell us.
It is zoned light industrial.
There you go. So I think there will be, uh, significant interest in that and I, at the moment, I would prefer, um, not to say that auctioning is not, uh, an adequate way of doing it, but if we're looking at trying to maximize the dollars back to the taxpayers, uh, I do believe, um, using an agent, um, would be a bit most beneficial, but that's my thought.
What's the realtor take for percentage on, on selling?
Can I have a, just a general comment on that or percentages?
That's what the RFP is for.
Yeah, so, but it'll range from five to six probably percentage, yeah. But that again is part of the RFP.
So does anybody want to amend? You want to amend the motion?
I, the, I yield to the two that if they prefer to stick with the auction, I'm good with that as well, so. We're going to stick with the auction.
I'm fine with the auction, but, uh, I, I don't know, do I have a second?
Yeah, you had a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, there was a second, so.
Can I, can, if you have an auction, rather than having it on the front step of the county, why can't we advertise that, that that would be sold at the premises itself? Where you have the auction, where people come and see, they look at the building, they look at the facilities, so it's an auction, a regular auction onsite.
I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't.
Would that be okay?
So, we're going to put this out for what, RFP for somebody to do the auction? Or are we going to have our auditor do it?
Can we have the same person that appraised it do the auction?
Yeah.
Or is that a conflict of interest?
Who appraised it?
Westra.
I think then we still have to go back to an RFP and.
I was going to say, I think if we're going to have, hire somebody to do the auctioneer, then we have to do the RFP.
I, well, that's my, that's my point. If we're going to do it, we're going to have to do an RFP, whether it's a realtor or an auction house.
It's a piece of property that will need to be advertised properly, whether you do an auctioneer, hired auctioneer or a real estate agent to make sure that, uh, you know.
What if we put out RFPs for auctioneers and realtors and seen which option came out better and then decided from that? Because you're, I mean, we don't know, the realtors might do six percent, the auctioneers might do eight percent, so.
Right. Um, commissioners, you made the motions, do you want to add that or change your motion?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, I think it's a good suggestion.
So.
So thank you, Madam Auditor.
Yes.
Sean, are you clear on what the motion is?
So the motion is to, um, set out RFP for auction or real estate agent for the transfer station land.
For the purpose of selling the transfer.
Correct. All right, um, Sean, we go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We're circling back to item five, Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Um, as you can see, the, uh, Marvinsky Airport, uh, Board, which is, um, I guess, uh, we were assigned, Commissioner Poppins and I to this at the beginning of the year, and as you can see, on April thirteenth, an advisory committee was created. We took a look at different, um, areas of the Marvinsky Airport, keeping in mind, uh, I guess, the, uh, people that are involved with the airport, particularly the, the people that run the airport, uh, those that are business flyers out of it, recreational flyers, uh, in its regard to its location with the city of T, uh, landowners nearby, those in economic development, and of course, those that are hangar tenants. And I guess, um, the thing that we looked at, and it's, it's nice to see that we have a lot of interest of those people in regard to our airport, um, along with the consultants that we have out of Aberdeen, uh, that they use, uh, individuals, as you can see, applied to be part of this committee to take a look at our current needs and also our needs in the future. And, uh, it looks like, um, uh, we've had several that have, uh, sent in letters, which is, which is very encouraging. I think approximately twenty. We were hoping to get, I think, one maybe in each particular area. So I think that, uh, that is something that has been encouraging. I, I, I would encourage that, uh, we create this committee, uh, that we do it and of course, obviously here at the courthouse, here at the commissioner's room. And, uh, I think anytime that you can get open discussion, communication, uh, with all involved, what direction we need to go, whether it be with hangar space, uh, the renters of hangars and so forth, or if it's, uh, expansion or taking a look at the terminal itself are all positive things. And so, um, I'm very supportive of, uh, the, the tracks that we're on right now. I guess, um, with that in regard, uh, I guess we could do a couple of things. We could, uh, look at, uh, the people that applied and, and select one from each area or that we could include everybody, which, you know, as we approach, uh, the summer season, trying to get everybody involved is not going to be easy anyway, so, um, maybe the more, the better so that we do get possibly a quorum. So anyway, uh, that's where we're at, at that particular process, and I know we'll need the help with our consultants from Aberdeen as well. But, uh, basically, um, I, I'm glad that we've had the number of applicants that we have that want to be part of this committee. Uh, I guess at this particular time, I don't know, Commissioner Poppins, did you want to add anything or not?
Uh, the one aspect and you and I spoke with it, um, about it the other day, was I did not know that we have, uh, a criteria of a landowner that is not a interested party in the airport itself, just general taxpayer. Um, I should say not a landowner necessarily, but from the county to have an outside perspective of the airport.
And that, and that makes sense to me as well. I, I guess what makes sense on something like this, Commissioner Poppins, you've historically handled, uh, the airport, airport, uh, things as they arise, and Commissioner Gibbon, um, can the two of you work together to go through your, um, list of, go through the people that did apply and come up with, um, members that you can agree on appointing?
I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that.
And then if you want, um, somebody else that's not, um, directly related to the airport. And then if you want somebody else that's not directly related to the airport, maybe discuss that and come up with a recommendation.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm, I'm, I'm good at, at, I shouldn't say I'm good, but I'm, I'm supportive of, of moving on this. Cause I think we have a lot of people that are interested in wondering what our next step is, particularly with, with the hangar and the hangar renter space.
Sure, so I just ask that the two of you meet and come up with an agreed upon list of people for the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then we have item seven, lease of county property at the northwest corner of South Main and East Seventh Street in Canton. Sherry.
Sorry, the reason that we have this on the agenda is back in March, we extended the DOT land lease. The tenant rents both that place and the corner lot here in Canton, thought they were both getting extended. So what we wanna do, or what he would like to have happen is just extend this one for the corner lot as the same as his other one, which would expire three thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Alright, you've heard the request, any, do you wanna make a motion on that?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
And same, same amount and everything?
Yeah, yep, ninety fifty a month.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Um, we had moved item eight to the bottom of the agenda, so I'm gonna go to item nine. Was discussion of regulation of the medical cannabis. Attorney Golden is gonna tee that up for us.
Thank you. We have had two, we have an initiative for medical marijuana that has passed, is gonna go into effect in July. We also have Amendment A that becomes part of the Constitution for recreational marijuana, which currently sits at the Supreme Court. And so we're waiting to see whether or not it's gonna be deemed constitutional or not. The issue that I wanna bring in front of the commission is that both of them give you the ability to do some regulations of retail, of manufacturing, of growth and testing facilities. And so the medical marijuana specifically gives you the ability to do licensing. Amendment A's also goes ahead and talks about licensing issues. And so, I have put together, and I think I provided to Commissioner Schmidt, a ordinance that has been going around the state and has been worked on for a licensing scheme for marijuana. It's something that's going to wind up being here in the county, one way or another, or up in Sioux Falls. And so, needs some direction on how you would like to do that. I've also been contacted by Minnehaha County and by Sioux Falls, that they have a joint task force that they'd like to put together. I was just emailed and told that they have adopted a joint task force and they're asking Lincoln County to join into it.
Yes.
So that there could be some cooperation and consistency in what actually gets put in place. So, I have a copy of what they had sent down.
Are they wanting, like, are they wanting, you want, who are they wanting, anybody in particular?
Madam Chair, I have.
I agree, Madam Chair should do it.
I have no problem doing it.
I will join you, because I've been in contact with several of the commissioners and several of the city officials. City council people. And I think it's very fundamental that we be part of this, so we have some uniform planning that goes forward. So that we don't, the ordinance that Bill sent to us, if you've read it, is very comprehensive. And I commend him for his efforts on that. I think that's one of the best ones. And just for public disclosure, Bill, I sent that ordinance that you drafted as a copy to Yankton County as well, because they are putting one forward, and so is Union County. And, you know, I got thinking, maybe this whole southeast district would have been better off if they would have planned together. So you would have had uniformity in Union, Clay, Yankton, Minnehaha, Lincoln, you know, Turner and Bonham. But having not have that, I think it's important that we are part of the city and the two counties. So, Madam Chair, I will be happy to join you as a participant.
Alright. Is that all you needed?
That is, and just the other is just to give you advice that planning and zoning is gonna be bringing an ordinance forward as well. And so we're trying to coordinate between the two. I believe the other jurisdictions are looking at, it's not a moratorium, but putting on so that no permits or licensing will occur until the Department of Health has their regulations out. They've circulated a portion of those regulations, but it's very difficult when we're working within the framework that we have to be within the department's rules, but they haven't adopted them yet. So, and our timeframe is July first for when this goes into effect. And so there is a concern that there won't be any regulations in place and people will start pulling permits. And then they will be able to go ahead and open up and possibly cultivate marijuana legally in the county.
But the, the state's requiring a state application, correct?
They require the state application, and that has to be completed by October twenty, or, yeah, October twenty-ninth.
The application?
Yes.
I mean, they haven't come up with the actual application yet, is that?
They haven't come up with the rules, so they can have an application. They're working on that.
But having a facility should, the requirement of the application and state approval should proceed county approving something of this nature, in your opinion?
That is gonna be ripe for litigation, is what my concern is, is that whether or not we have something in place, if somebody comes in, pulls a permit, opens up retail or sets up their own operation, and we don't have any regulations on it, because it becomes possible on July first, and then there's an argument about grandfathering it in. So those are the concerns that the three different entities are talking about. And I don't know that it's not worthwhile starting to talk to T in Harrisburg as well, because they may be prime locations where people wanna open up shops as well. So I would ask for action on the joint task force.
I would still move.
For?
Participation.
For participation.
Right.
Joining the task force.
Yes, and I think we've, we're agreeable to doing that, so you've made your motion. Is there a second? Got a motion and a second, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Bill, were we gonna need an executive session today at all? We are gonna move, Sherry, do you want us to do that first, or do you wanna do your budget discussion first? Do you need to get things set up, or are you ready to roll? Were you planning on staying here for the budget discussion, or do you need to get going? I think, I think we're gonna, let's handle the executive session first and then we'll handle the budget.
Good plan.
Madam Chair, I would move to go in executive session under pending litigation. What are we dealing with? Contracts.
Contracts, contracts it is. Do I have a second to go into executive session for contracts? Thank you, I have a motion and a second, Sean.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes, we're in executive session. I'm out of executive session.
So move, Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Alright, Sherry, budget.
Move for approval.
So we're not going over it? Yeah, oh.
So. I'm gonna get my, I'm gonna start using this gall ball pretty soon.
Okay, so we're not actually going over the number numbers, these are the preliminary, what we've all pulled together. I'm gonna run through what, how I'm doing it and see what you guys think. We are gonna have to have further budget discussions though, to go over line items. Alright, so, we went through the timeline and we know that we've got till July fifteenth to do any opt-outs. September seventeenth is still my goal for the public hearing. These are the differences, so twenty twenty, we had twenty, and this basically is over the general fund. Twenty million, thirty-eight thousand, seven ninety-three for twenty twenty. It increased by three point nine four seven percent from twenty-one, or from twenty to twenty twenty-one. And then you see the three different types per the different colas that we put in. This is the change in the general fund cash over the years. You'll notice that in eighteen and nineteen is the only time that the change in cash was below. And that is because of the airport purchase and the Delaware project. The, just timing difference in the Delaware project, not that we spent the money.
Delaware pre or Delaware?
Delaware.
Is it Delaware? It is Delaware.
Delaware, yeah, the Dendelk.
Yep.
Yep. You had me confused. Alright, so, the approach that I'm taking for the revenue is I'm gonna trend over the last three years, what we received in revenue. The only exception is I'm, obviously I'm gonna take out the CARES Act money, because otherwise we'd really, it would be over budgeted. So this is kind of what we've done over the past, since two thousand fifteen. The bottom number is the budget, the top number is the actual, so you can see that Lincoln County's pretty conservative on how they budget. I'm trying to get the numbers to come closer together though. Alright, so this is what we've got for general fund revenues overall. For the taxes, charge, our chain, charges for goods and service, intergovernmental revenue, miscellaneous revenue, fines and forfeits, forfeits and license and permits. So you kinda see the trend that's been going on with this. I'm, right now I've got a increase in general fund revenue of seven point seven six one percent. A lot of that comes from the property taxes, I've done a four point two percent budget. That's with the one point two oh CPI, which is set by the state, and doing a three-year average of three percent of growth. And I think this number's gonna be low, I think we're gonna have more growth, hopefully. This is the general fund property tax statistics. So that just shows you where I got the three percent for the growth. License and permits. You look at the percent increase from twenty-one to twenty-two and it looks high. But if you go back over the years, you'll see that they are, it's not out of line to do the budget request of two hundred and fourteen thousand. At this point, as of May eighteenth, we are eighty-five percent of the budget of one seventy-four, six hundred that we budgeted for twenty twenty-one. So we are collecting more in license and permits than we have budgeted for previously. I increased the intergovernment number by the three-year average, so I don't think it's gonna be out of line. A bump up a little bit, but I still, I think we're gonna be alright with that. Fine, fine in forfeitures, if I would have done the three-year average on that, it would have been eighty-five, one hundred. But with the, the way it's flexed so much over the years, I just decided to be conservative and do it at seventy thousand. Miscellaneous revenue. This is the final revenue type. The general fund, I did increase this from last year budget, but I went through the contracts that we have for rents and recorded them at the face value. I did also jump the interest revenue up, I'm pretty confident of the increasing on that. And you'll notice that it is still not trended. We have some significant increases in two thousand seventeen, we had Spring Creek Tributary, where we recouped a lot of our expenditures there that weren't accounted for. And we sold the old highway shop in two thousand eighteen, that's the significant increases there. So now we're going into the expenditures. The first one is gonna be using the two point oh cola. And granted, these numbers are just what the budget, or the departments have requested. Like, I haven't gone through what you guys, I'd rather sit down and talk to you about where we think the commissioner's budget and everything else is going. I did small increases on the commissioner's budget, just so that we'd have the numbers in here and get a general idea of what they're looking at. But overall, the total expenses for the general fund is gonna be twenty-one million, seven forty-nine, seven oh nine at two point oh. Twenty-one million, seven eighty-two, one twenty-nine at two point five. And twenty-one, eight thirty-five, six twenty-five at three point two five. The next one is the, the next three are gonna then be the preliminary means of finance. So the magic word there at the bottom is cash applied. Cash applied just means that we're taking the money that we currently have in account and using it to cover the bills that we're saying that we're requesting. So I've used a lot of, like, the million dollars for the highway is what they've used for cash applied over the last few years. Otherwise, the rest of them are just balances that they have in there. Same thing on that one. Alright, so this is the fun one. You'll see on top is the projected revenues, that's gonna be the same no matter what we do for the cost of living. Then we do five percent of appropriations, again, it's gonna be differences with the different amounts of the cola. And up at top, we just have the step increases. I don't have any numbers in there for the cost of living. But if you come down then, we do, oh, I lied. Up at the top, I do have the cost of living and the step increases included in the total appropriations. So you'll see the differences in there. The next set is the new requests, so we've got new hires that we're requesting and also new equipment to train, and training for the new hires. That brings you down to the additional five percent required for the new, and then this bottom one here is the budget shortfall. I used the recommended cash applied of five million dollars. If you look back over the last three years, that's lower than what you've had for cash applied. So there's where our budget shortfall is, on all the different deals, using the recommended cash applied. And that is it.
Leave that one up, would you, Sherry?
I will.
Thank you.
And like I said, I think we can maybe go through and fine tune some of the budget numbers. I don't think they're gonna be significant changes, they possibly could be. You know, the one, the biggest budgets, of course, are gonna be the sheriff, the highway and building and grounds. So I think you definitely are gonna wanna go through those ones, because they've got more project planning and things like that. With the exception of sheriff, he doesn't really have projects, but. And the new hires, they encompass sheriff's office and state's attorney and planning and zoning.
Sherry, if, if on that bottom line, where we show two, two and a half, or three and a quarter, how much difference would you say that if you limited that three and a quarter to three, just?
Come on, this is why, this is why we went through this before.
And I could divide, I could divide, you know, the half a percent in there.
That's not gonna make enough of a difference.
So it's about thirty thousand, it's insignificant.
It's very insignificant, I mean, but that's why.
That's my point.
Yeah, 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 okay, well, I thought you were gonna start doing it by the quarters, and I'm like, no, let's, let's not do that this year.
I mean, I'm looking at, trying to figure this out, but it's really very insignificant. When you look at a budget of twenty million plus dollars, you know?
It's fifty-six thousand.
So the cost of living adjustment, that two percent and two point five and three point two five, that also, and does that include the step in the salaries as well then?
Yep.
Two point two?
Yep.
So then it's really a four point two or a?
Well, no, you have to, it's a two percent cost of living, and the step is different, they're two totally different things, so. Yeah, but yes, it does include, if you qualify for the two and a half. Yeah, but yes, it does include, if you qualify for the two and a half percent step, then yes, it would include it in there.
Step is in these calculations.
Yup.
Thank you.
Well, if you read the paper lately, and you figure out what they're paying for entry level positions all across South Dakota, salaries are definitely rising.
Could you bring up the chart that had the cash fund, and it's over a series of years, what it's doing?
Which one?
Well, I, I shared with you yesterday, Commissioner Schmidt, I don't think of, in my world too, I, I don't see any school district in this county that has given staff more than a three point five percent increase.
Then that might change, because all the school districts in this state are getting a lot of money with no restrictions on it, so.
I think they've already settled, from what I've talked to.
I, I don't know, I'm just saying that if the teachers don't get a, then they, it's different than us.
I know it's different, but I, I agree with Commissioner Schmidt, there's a lot of jobs that people are looking for, but at the same time, you know, some of those jobs are in, in tailworking nights and evenings and weekends and holidays.
Thank you for the report, Sherry.
Sherry, this is very good.
Well, thanks.
Let's say that, that's very good, very comprehensive, I like that.
I'm here for you.
You got colors and?
That's all it takes?
No. Sherry, Sherry, go back to revenue on your chart once. That, that's a good one, that one is an excellent one, because it does show you the indication. But go back to our history once, because I think that's.
This one?
That's pretty telling on how conservative we have always been. We have been very conservative, and if the taxpayers really looked at that, our budget crunching has always been well within reason, we haven't been, and to our own thing, which we should, we should, taxpayers may or may not appreciate, we have not had an opt-out. You name me a county in our district that has not had an opt-out. And they have had several, I don't care if you're talking Turner, Union, Clay, you talk anybody, they have all had opt-outs. We, in Lincoln County, have never had an opt-out. Well, are we going to need one? Yes, we are. But up until this point, we can look back with pride that we have been very, very, I think, judicious in taxpayer dollars and spending them wisely.
Your, your three new hires were possible, were planning and zoning, state's attorney, and what was the third one?
The sheriff's office. There's four total new positions requested.
Okay.
With that, Madam Chair, thank you, Sherry, but I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Sherry?